He's right. You've got a job.
All right.
Good evening. Can I have your attention, please? Call this meeting of the Lewis County Board of Education to order. It's Monday, April 24th, 2023, and the time is 6 o'clock. I'm going to ask Tori Shanhold if she would lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dr. Lewis, are there any agenda adjustments?
Yes. On item 15, the effective date is 23/25 for jobs, West Virginia graduate. And then item three and four, I would like to move after five, before academics.
Okay. So we are at item five, personnel achievement recognition and student achievement, community involvement showcase. We had some things with community and schools, all in for me. And so if you all will do your presentations.
Hi, hi, everybody. So I am, sorry, our community and school coordinator at Roundtable Lane Middle School. And I'm joined by Sarah Linger, our CIS at the high school, that's where you're at. It's been a long time. Thank you, guys, for joining us. And I know a lot of our people in this room are here for this movement exactly. So with communities and schools, our big thing is, really at the base of all of it, is building relationships with students. Like that, that is what we do. Tonight, we're really, really fortunate to have students join us that have really, we have this hashtag that they use in CIS, all in for kids. And so whenever we think about that, we think about what the adults are doing, which is cool. But really, at the end of the day, you can give somebody all of the resources they need, and it's up to them to make the choice to use what you give them. And so tonight, we really, really want to take a moment to recognize our students who have taken all those resources we have thrown at them and talked with them about. And they have done the work to be all in for me, all in for themselves. So that's really what we're focusing on here tonight. The other really cool piece, we have found a way to pull in so many different elements of our school. Every student and every teacher has been recognized.
We lost you.
Every student and every teacher being recognized.
Hello, we lost you.
Is a piece of artwork that was designed specifically, what is the name, by a middle school student and one by a high school student. So we're going to take a vote in favor of those students first.
You don't have to pick it. We lost you. Come up now.
We have each middle school and each, yeah, each middle school student and teacher is getting a really beautiful piece of artwork that's sent by one of our sixth graders, Carly Samuelten, who's here with us.
Lewis and I were talking, and we were thinking, like, we wanted to really tie in how talented some of our students are at our schools. So we put out a little contest where they had to, all they had to do was something Lewis County and all in for kids. That was the only thing that they had to do. So we got a lot of submissions, and then the other CISs and the other counselors and all the schools voted. And we got our winners. And so then we have Katie Clem.
Doctor.
Yep, she is our 11th grader.
So we're going to be given out, we've got like 40 prints of each of these that we're giving out. There's also out on the table, whenever you first come in from the CIS thing, there's small sticker printouts of these designs as well. So please, take one for yourself. If there's not one on the table, track Sarah and Adam will be happy to find you one, because these are spectacular. One of the really, really cool things that I noticed, because they were allowed to do anything, both of our winners actually, like, hand draw, drew, I'm not racist, hand drew, like, the Lewis County, county, and everything. So it's just really, really neat. So thank you two for putting that piece of art and taking the time to do it. We have a student from every grade level, fifth through 12th, that is being recognized. Unfortunately, from the middle school, I do have one student and teacher who couldn't join us tonight. So what I'd like is all of my, my middle schoolers, almost not my students, but like, Matthew was mine last year. So Clara and Robert and Helen, come join me, friends. So these are three of my spectacular students that I get to hang out with every day. And so, oh, and we're missing our sixth grade student, Owen Holderman, who, his CIS from last year, he was a Leaning Creek student. So we specifically invited Mel to join us tonight, too, because she did a lot of work with Owen as well. Unfortunately, couldn't join us tonight, but thank you, Mel, for all the work you've done with Owen. So, like I said, each of our students is getting a piece of artwork and a little certificate. So Ms. Helen, it's for you, friend. And then, oh, sorry. And then Robert, here's, take those things off, I'm sorry. There we go. There we go. So then the other super important part of this are the teachers that do, I mean, near work, Sarah and I just get to be the chaos coordinators. At the end of the day, the students spend their time with teachers. And so whenever we came up with this idea, we wanted the teacher component to be a big part of it. And so as soon as I told the kids what they were being recognized for, my number one question was, okay, so if you get to bring a teacher with you, who? So some of the things, whenever I've talked to these kids, and some of you guys got to hear this in our last talk back, like, the big thing that these students look for in their teachers are people who take the time out, have instruction, and build those relationships with them. The people who just show care and comfort and just extra support. So going past what we already have this long list of things that teachers are responsible for, these teachers are having a moment where they're standing out and making such a big impact in, in our students' lives. So, that being said, we have three teachers with us, I think, that are coming up to, oh, I don't know, is that Misses? Okay, so let's start with our fifth grader, Ms. Helen. Is Miss Reinhardt here? I don't think Miss Reinhardt got to come. So Helen and I are going to do a special presentation in the fifth grade hallway tomorrow for Miss Reinhardt, and I actually. And then our, this is our eighth grade, so Ms. Harris, will you come up with us? Okay. Our, what's her name? Okay, there we go. Our next is our eighth grade, that is Mr. De Josia. And then. Owen wanted to recognize his teacher, Mrs. Smar, as well, and unfortunately, she couldn't join us either. So we're going to have a special presentation in the sixth grade hallway tomorrow. We're just extending our celebration. So just as a coworker, thank you for what you guys do.
Thank you.
And thanks, you guys, you guys are just. And then middle schoolers, we made an assignment. We made.
I do, I like.
Oh, thanks, okay.
I have a high school student, I have three here this evening. Okay, so this evening, I have Matthew Graham, he's a freshman here. This is for you, Matthew. And then we have our 10th grader, Kate Butcher. And my junior was unable to make it, Emily Van Buren. And our senior is Tori Shanhold. And again, we are really proud of our students. You know, we've made goals, we've discussed these things, and they really have done a tremendous job this year, and we're very proud of them. Also, I would like to say that Matthew is my freshman, and he did have Ms. Shanhold's last year at the middle school. So it's been nice to have him here. And we also have our ABC social worker, Cassandra Lamont, here, and she has also worked with a couple more students. So we're happy to have her here. And so we just want to say thank you, so we want to get your guys' teachers up here. So Mrs. Eiler is here. All right, and Miss Wyman. And Tori has Mrs. Hoffman, who is at front of her, Lee, so we're so happy to have her. And yeah, and Miss Carr, so actually, so we had the students, you know, pick a teacher, and it is hard, just one teacher, because, you know, we know that they, it's a hard decision, I know that. But what was really funny was, I think, three of my kids immediately said, who's helped you? And they said Jasper, which is fun. We're very happy about that. And I was like, okay, let's, let's pick a teacher. So we had a little bit of confusion, and Miss Carr, she said twice, but somehow she didn't get her invitation. So we're still recognizing Miss Carr as a teacher, she didn't make it, so I'll make sure she gets this tomorrow. Also, Emily Van Buren, my junior, she picked Mrs. Farr, and Mrs. Farr retired last year. So it's really nice to see her still, you know, give her that recognition, and she really helped her through her years. So thank you, guys.
So, one last part of this. So communities and schools, we literally bring our community in, we brought the entire community into the board meeting today, thank you. So it is just as much a partnership between the teachers and CIS and our students, the parents and the relatives that are in this room, thank you, guys, for making this happen for your students and for supporting them and being that at home. You have to be aware of our beautiful pieces of artwork that we would like to give to some of our other community members that have really stepped out and helped us out. Something's out of order, but that's okay, I'm going to set this here, I know who this belongs to, so. Yeah, it's that one. Dr. Lewis, thank you for bringing CIS to our county and everything you've done with it. Okay. And then thank you, Lewis County High School, for all of the work that you do for your students, to help support them and make graduation a thing. And my fellow coworkers at the middle school, thank you, guys, for being a part of making some of the roughest years of education a thing. The person who, we talk about the people behind the scenes that do all the things, Amanda Craig, everything you have done to support our CIS team, amazing, thank you so much. And lastly, we have had some very special guests come in, be a part of this chaos this afternoon. Whenever we talk about support from behind the scenes, these people do all of the support for all of the really scary, like, data points that we do in our drop. And they're like the unsung heroes, and they're so willing to just stop and like answer a phone call from us whenever we have a situation we don't know what to do. So our CIS West Virginia people, we have Tracy, Zach, and Jenny with us. And we would like for you guys also to have a little piece of Lewis County to take back to Charles. And we would like for you guys also to have a little piece of Lewis County to take back to Charles. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for all you did.
Thank you all. Congratulations to everyone. It's really great to see success and happiness and folks being educated. So, so thank you very much. Thank you. At this time, unfortunately, I need to request an executive session to consider an approved student expulsion hearing agreement for student 2223P and 2223Q. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion.
Dave has made a motion. Is there a second?
Second. I'll second.
Well, Adam, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero. The time is six seventeen PM, and I'm afraid I'm going to have to, we're going to have to meet in here, as I think the other. Are we on, Mr. Kidd? Okay, thank you. Mrs. Nestle Road also sat with the board in executive session. And do I have a motion to come out of executive session?
Make a motion.
Mike has moved to come out of executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Adam. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero. The time is now six twenty-four. Let the record show that no action was taken in the executive session. Do I have a motion to uphold the superintendent's recommendation to expel student 2223P?
Make a motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero. Do I have a motion to uphold the superintendent's recommendation to expel student 2223Q?
Make a motion.
Mike has moved. Is there a second?
I'll second it again.
Dave is second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero. Next on our agenda, we have academics, Dr. Lewis.
I think we heard those through the CISs, and you can see how they're helping our students.
All right, we had no one sign up as a delegation. We have several minutes. February twenty-seventh, regular meeting. March thirteenth, regular meeting. April the sixth, a special meeting. April the tenth, a regular meeting. April the twelfth, a special meeting. Is there a motion to approve those?
I'll make the motion.
Adam has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kenny. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero. Next, we have our consent agenda, and that is in our packet with the addition in the revised agenda. Bray Smith, Lewis County Economic Development Authority, use of Roanoke Elementary School for public meeting for water project, April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, five thirty PM to eight. Sean Smith of the Lewis County Soccer Association, use of the Jane Lu Elementary School gym, April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, through June seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, Saturdays from one PM to three PM. Third is Amy Kovach, dazzling diamonds, use of Lewis County High School gym, restrooms, dressing rooms, concession area, June ninth, twenty twenty-three, at four o'clock, to June tenth, twenty twenty-three, at eight o'clock. That was previously approved for May the nineteenth and the twentieth of this year. Also, then, we have out-of-state meeting requests. Gerald Paul, Supervisor of Transportation, STN Expo, Indianapolis Convention Center, Indianapolis, Indiana, June first through the sixth, twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Dave has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero. Next, we have to approve the payroll and payment of bills in the amount of eight hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Well, Mike has moved.
I'll second it.
Well, Kenny's moved, and Mike seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero. We have some budget entry supplements that we need to approve, and that supplements three dash zero 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 one through three dash zero 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 eight, then four dash zero 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 one through four dash zero 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 ten, and then four dash oh one oh one nine. Those were enclosed in our packets. So is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Dave has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Adam. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero. Next is consider an approved motion to appoint Julian Spencer as the Lewis County Board of Education Treasurer for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Adam has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero. Next, Mrs. Mace. Are you doing a due personnel, Mr. Tin?
Okay, thank you. Getting some of that red Kool-Aid. That punch was delicious. Yes.
Yes, he's right here.
Thank you for.
All right, Kenny, can you hear me? Kenny?
Yes.
Okay. The superintendent's recommendation, please accept the following recommendations. Number one, employ the probationary professional personnel list for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year as listed.
Twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Say twenty-three, twenty-four? Well, that's what I read on my paper. Twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Adam has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero.
Please employ the probationary service personnel for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year as listed.
Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Mike has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Adam seconded.
Adam seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero.
Three, please accept the following reservations or retirements. A, Sonia James, resignation after school tutor, sparking literacy program for Roanoke Elementary School, effective April tenth, twenty twenty-three. B, Carmen Skiles, resignation, grade one, teacher, Roanoke Elementary School, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Dave has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Adam. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. We, we've had a request, Mrs. Mace, for item four D to be taken separately.
You want to take it first? You want to take it first? We'll just take it first, since we're taking it by itself. Four, please consider and approve the following requests. D, Loretta Workman, approved non-paid medical leave of absence, April fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, and April seventeenth through nineteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Adam has moved. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Dave. Any discussion?
I'd like a roll call vote, please.
All right. Mike?
Nay.
Kenny?
Nay.
Um, yay. Dave?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Motion carries three two.
We are not taking action on, uh, A, the gentleman called me today for medical purposes cannot fulfill.
Okay.
So B, Megan McKnight, approved non-paid, approved non-paid medical leave of absence, April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. C, Amy Gosa, approved donated days, March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, through March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, and April eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Virginia Croft, approved non-paid medical leave of absence, May nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, through June two, twenty twenty-three. F, Jessica Bailey, approved non-paid medical leave of absence, April twelve, twenty twenty-three.
Make a motion.
Dave has moved. Is there a second?
Second. I'll second.
Okay, Kenny has seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero.
Six, please employ the following service personnel. F, Jason Hawkins, bus operator, Transportation Department, effective for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. G, Amanda Hager, cafeteria manager slash cook, Lewis County High School, effective for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. H, Ernest Arnold, cook, Peterson Central Elementary School, effective for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And I, Donnie Griddle, custodial maintenance, Peterson Central Elementary School, effective for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Mike has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Adam. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero.
We do have parent volunteers, approve the, approve the following parent community volunteers for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, so very last page of your packet, page twenty-seven. Jane Lu Elementary School, Michaela Shaver. Lewis County High School, Rebecca Collins, Linda James, Stanley Lowe, Theresa McCormick. Peterson Central, Cheryl Ferris. Robert Blen Middle School, Stanley Lowe.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Dave has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero. Is there a facilities construction update?
Just a very brief one. Um, today, Robert Blen Middle School and Laden Creek Elementary School both had door checks from Jeff Harvey's Corporation, Harvey Associates.
Harvey Frat.
And they were a hundred percent secure today for our schools. We need to think about. And they were a hundred percent secure today from our schools. We need to think about Robert Blaine. That's a lot of schools. They've done well. And there was a problem. We had roof damage three weeks ago at the last storm at the middle school that week to give, and they're coming back tomorrow to check out what's going on.
And then, give them a update. We are receiving an S. B. A. grant for secure entries.
Secure entries.
At Peterson and Roanoke. We have scheduled summer school and Energy Express at Peterson. But because they're hoping to work on that this summer, and it'll be on your agenda May eighth, we'll probably, we announced we're moving it to Jane Lou.
We're doing construction. We don't want to get that, and we don't want to limit their construction works.
And, you know, I know last year we didn't have at Peterson Middle School, and it didn't happen, but just that possibility, we don't want to delay it on our end.
Their hope is to start after school is finished and the completed version starts.
So.
So we don't want to be any delay on our part.
Yeah. I just wanted to give you that update.
How is the, I do have one thing, Ms., how is the, up in the weight room, the air condition?
The parts are on order.
Okay.
And did you want to talk about our frontline under personnel that is new?
I mean, I don't have much to tell you other than the state has adopted an online application process for all fifty-five counties. We will no longer be accepting paper applications as of July first. It's a huge change for all positions. I've been through many trainings, and I still kind of come out of there going a little confused, but we're working our way through it. It'll start July first.
So, any?
When you hear people complaining about it, please understand, it's not mine. We were voluntold when we were doing it.
All service and professional, and even like.
Extracurriculars and everything.
Everything.
Online.
Yes.
Dr. Lewis, Mrs. Mace is still here. The concern that I had sent you about the boosters at the middle school with softball.
That was a great one. Yeah, I wish they'd gone to the athletic director.
But that's been addressed.
So, yeah.
Okay.
Now, on this new system of what Ms. was talking about there, Mr. Ted, can you help anybody that would need help, you know, going over the computer or anything, or who would they go see?
They will get, as we were told, we will be able to provide limited assistance to them, but once they start the process, we won't be able to see any of their applications or any of their information.
Okay. Does the state have anybody that they could send up to help get the employees through this? Because I'm sure this is going to be a big adjustment for some of them.
It's going to be a major adjustment. I do have concerns about that, but unfortunately, it's going live July first.
Okay, I understand that, but is there anything we can get from Charleston or talk to the State Board of Education?
Mrs. Mace has checked with them, and they have said that once the person starts the process, they're on their own.
What I've been told, there is a brief flyer or handout that will go out to all staff members to let them know, and they don't create an account in advance, which is what I was hoping we could do with this, to let all employees work on their account, because once you make an account with them, it's good for all fifty-five counties. So when you apply for a job anywhere in the state, you've already made that account. Let's say you upload your resume. It's already there unless you want to update it. You can upload the letters of reference. There's lots of things you can put into it. You don't have to, but you put it. But then it's there until you can, as the account owner, or lack of a better word, will delete it. It's not going to be a simple process, and we'll help them all we can, but once they get into the process... But, Mr. Lewis, everybody does Facebook, and if you can make a Facebook account, you probably would be okay.
Well, I was just looking out for the employees and, you know, everybody wanting to bid everything, and I understand it's coming from Charleston.
I voiced my opinions any time.
Oh, I'm sure you did. So, that's all I'm saying, you know, if we could somehow put the pressure on the State Board of Education, maybe that's where we need to head it a little bit.
Anything else? All right, next we have policies, first reading of policies. Policy Chapter eighty-six seventy, transportation by limited passenger vehicles. Policy Chapter eighty-six forty, transportation for curricular and co-curricular and extracurricular district sponsored trips. And Policy Chapter eighty-six sixty, transportation of students by private vehicle. Is there a motion to approve?
I make the motion.
Adam has moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Dave has seconded. Discussion?
Jerry, what's your thoughts on these policies?
I haven't got to go through enough to make my decision to make the decision.
No one's made any comments, Mr. Holden. They've been up online.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose nay. Motion carries five zero. Next is consider and approve memorandum of understanding between jobs for West Virginia graduates and the Lewis County Board of Education effective for the twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-five school years. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Dave has moved. Adam seconded. Discussion?
They want to achieve your commitment. I talked to our treasurer, Mrs. Spencer, that we would do that at Denmuth, saying that we could get out of it ninety days. I'm a little worried to commit for two years. It says in the contract, if there's no funding, we plan on using some blended funding. I don't want to speak for Mr. Winston or Mr. Coger, but they're here. Mrs. Elizabeth House did meet with you guys on the phone, and your thoughts that it would be something.
If we can sustain it for two years, it would be very beneficial. Starting it for one year and not being able to see it all the way through, you know, is always scary. But the more chances we get for our kids to get out and get exposed to things, and the type of kid that it could really impact, would be very beneficial for those kind of students.
And we're concerned with our graduation rate. We're being hit also with our graduation rate with special ed. There are some grants out there, our special ed, that we received, and we could blend this. So we do need it for two years, but, and they, that's what the agreement. But we will sign a Denmuth saying.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero. Next is consider and approve agreement between Lewis County Schools and communities and schools, the C. I. S., effective for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Adam has moved. Second?
Yeah, I'll second.
I'll second.
Dave beat Kenny there. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose nay. Motion carries five zero. Next we have consider and approve local school improvement council, individual schools. Waiver of West Virginia Board of Education policy request for Lewis County High School for the twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-six school years. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Dave has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Adam. Mr. Winston, would you?
And Mr. Coger.
And Mr. Coger?
They're here.
Would you explain this to us, please?
Yeah, that's the favor to the State Board of Education, so that we can get the waiver to teach office procedures and communications in one class setting. So they would have the same class, but the first semester would be office procedures, second semester communications. The CSSs are pretty close, and other schools are doing this. It will allow our business students to complete the CTE program study in three years rather than four, which would open them up for the possibility of completing more than one program. If they complete more than one program in separate years, they count as separate completers. If they complete more than one program in the same year, they still only count as one. So this would allow us to get more completers through that program and open up the possibility of maybe giving them in CWSD their senior year.
Okay.
Good job. Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero. Next we have motion to extend offer of employment to Melinda Stewart for the position of superintendent of Lewis County Schools with a three-year contract to begin on July one, twenty twenty-three, in the amount of a hundred and eighteen thousand for one year, for year one, excuse me, a hundred and twenty thousand for year two, and a hundred and twenty-two thousand for year three. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Adam has moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Dave has seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero. Melinda, congratulations. Would you like to stand up and say anything, or?
Oh, I wasn't really prepared for that. I had to come and make sure it was real. I am, I am so excited. I cannot wait to take on this challenge. I know that Dr. Lewis has done a nice job during her tenure here, and I'll be anxious to have some conversation with her and kind of pass the torch a little bit, but very humbled and very blessed to be coming home.
Well, we're thrilled that you're going to help us. We're going to miss Dr. Lewis, but we're looking forward to you being in charge and helping us as well. Okay. Any items for discussion?
None.
A report, the use of buildings and grounds.
This is your monthly?
In the packet.
This is your spreadsheet, monthly?
Yes, okay. Board comments. Kenny, we'll start with you.
I don't have anything. I just want to welcome the superintendent and look forward to...
Okay. Dave?
Mention a couple of things. As most of you know, Klein Craig passed away recently. Send condolences to his family. Klein was a board member for eternity, a very humble man, common sense kind of person, and I think everybody thought a lot of Mr. Craig. So thoughts and prayers to his family. Also, former bus driver Buck Rorba, who drove bus for about sixteen or seventeen years, passed away this past week. And then it's, I sometimes dread saying this, but it's my understanding that a former Lewis County High School math teacher, Pat Bush, passed away today, and we want to send prayers and condolences to her family. Lovely lady. Finally, I do want to make a comment about the C. I. S. program. I enjoyed their little soiree. You can tell the kids are enthused. They have helped a lot of people, and I'm glad it's coming back for another year, hopefully.
That's the first step, not?
Hopefully, 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 it'll be back.
She did say it looked good.
It looked good, okay. That's all.
Okay. Mike?
Ah, yes, I'd also like to congratulate Mr. Stewart. Look forward to working with you. You got a big job ahead of you, so hang right on. It's going to be quite an experience. But I think that also I'd like to make agree with Dave, Eric, Klein, Craig, and Buck Rorba. Buck Rorba was my bus driver, and Mrs. Bush was one of my teachers, and all of them, all of them were good people, so my condolences go out to their family. And also, Mrs. Nestle Road, could you give us kind of a brief update on the food situation?
Yes, you asked for me to bring what was the percentage that...
Could you come up here where Kenny Lowler can hear you, because I can barely hear you myself?
You asked me to bring what was the percentage, is the question you asked, what was the percentage of the meals that were eaten at the high school?
Yes, ma'am.
And, for instance, countywide, you might have sixty-three point sixty-eight percent, and the high school is at forty-three point forty-four, forty-eight percent. So right at forty-four. And I tried to pick, yeah.
Also, there is something I would like to go into executive session to discuss that I was asked about, if we could go into executive session.
It's not on the agenda.
Okay, well, I'm asking to go into it. I was asked to ask some, a couple of questions, so.
It's not on the agenda.
Okay.
Anything else?
Ah, well, I'll go a different route with it then. That's all.
Okay. Adam?
Yeah, just two, two quick things. I want to thank the colleagues, or my colleagues up here, for supporting this Josh Washington graduates program. I think it's going to be truly a good benefit to Lewis County. And the second thing is, I know that Mr. Coger, Mr. Winston, and you and Mrs. Nestle Road, and David Bush were with me at the Painters Union, and as I was walking in, ironically, Mr. Barker was there, and I stopped and talked to him just for a few minutes, and I guess that they are going to modify that age, I gather, soon to age seventeen, which would put some of our high school seniors in play, I hope. So I thought that was a good little tidbit of information.
That's wonderful.
That's great.
That's all I have.
Okay. All right. Well, community and schools, I'm really hoping they do their thing. Looking forward to working with Ms. Stewart. And I also read in the paper, somebody named Emily Leibarger had a really good time at tennis tournament this past weekend. That's great. That's all we have for board comments and discussion. I know Jeff had sent us the video. Have we watched the video?
And Mr. Ted can just, in two minutes or less, talk about it, and then we're going to, I'll let you talk.
So, the One Pill Can Kill campaign is a social media campaign, just a campaign to make sure that our students, our families, our communities are all well aware of the fentanyl issue that our nation is facing, including West Virginia, including our hometown community here. This video kind of highlights our local communities and the problems with drugs that we're seeing. What we have within this, I send it to everyone here as well, is the parent toolkit plus educator toolkit that I'm going to send out after this meeting this evening, and I'm going to send out just the social media, to social media the video, and everything that we need to kind of get the word out there about what's going on, guys. And it's one pill can kill, because it takes the tiniest amount of this deadly, deadly drug to ruin lives. So it was an impactful video that, it really will shake some students. So, yeah. Any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
Do all of our teachers, are they Narcan certified?
Um.
Trained? Have Narcan?
They are not, not all of them. We have quite a few that are. I know they were doing training at the high school. Is that right? Was that, that was this past? It was really recent. We had some of them that were trained.
We have trained.
The draw-up fair. We have, we do have trained people, I'd say, probably in every building.
We have trained all buildings, even this building, and we have some here on hand in all schools.
Yep. And if, the Health Department will actually provide that.
Yes, they provide the cans and the training. And if that's...
I think it'd be very wise to have one in every classroom. It'd be a possibility.
Something we would help.
It's just residual.
Yeah, for sure. No, for sure. It's a...
You need to have it. It's a bad idea.
This, this drug epidemic, guys, it's only, hopefully it's going to get better, but right now it's a little rough. So, yeah. We're going to get that campaign out there to kind of get the word out, and let the community know.
I will check with the Health Department to see if that's a possible.
I'll help you with the...
Thank you. I know that the Health Department wouldn't give us the cans until she came up and trained.
Thank you. Our next meeting is May the eighth at six o'clock here. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
I make the motion.
Adam has moved. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Dave. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.